Of a high priority and Appendix Two again gives you a table, a visual representation of where they are and then we go on in Appendix Three to talk about the reasons why they're delayed. We have a section on fraud and anti-corruption, which I think you're fairly used to. I think the key point to draw out here that there have been no new reported cases of fraud or whistleblowing and good progress has been made on the post-payment assurance work. So, as discussed, Appendix One gives you a high-level overview of where the internal audit days have been completed and in what areas and how we're getting on with concluding on quarter two work. And then at Appendix Two, on page twenty-three, as previously mentioned, you can see the breakdown of the high priority actions. And then at Appendix Three, starting page twenty-four, you can see each high outstanding recommendation and a new deadline date and a reason for why it's been delayed. So, at this point, hopefully that's given you a broad overview, but if you wish to ask any questions about the content, I'm more than happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay, for introducing the report. I'll throw it open to members and I see councillor Sanders indicating, councillor.
Thank you very much, Chair. Very, very interesting report, interesting to read. One thing, though, on page twenty-five, which is part of Appendix Three, and it talks about the long-term projects likely to be at least five years. As software is upgraded, which includes the ability to remove data, this will be tested. So I'm guessing this refers to historical data that needs to be deleted as a result of GDPR rules. Does this date back to the days of Stereo when Stereo ran out IT and software?
Thank you for your question. I'm not sure that's one I'm going to be able to answer due to not having the kind of historical background on that one. What we can do is take that question and pose it to the service area and see if they can give a response, unless there's anybody here that obviously can add a little bit more in that area, but I'm happy to take that away. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay, and we look forward to the answer for that. I had councillor Haynes followed by councillor Wright. Thank you.
Just on that same item, it says in the second paragraph there that testing has been suspended. What's the plan of this testing, resuming that testing or just generally how we're moving forward on that?
Ken, I think that's a really good question and one that we need to bring an answer back on, so I'll make contact with the head of neighbourhood housing and see if we can provide you with an update in that regard.
Councillor Wright. Thank you, Chair. I have three questions that also relate to that same page on Appendix Three in relation to GDPR. The first of which is for the Information Asset Register, which hasn't been updated since 2016. Do we know how this slipped as part of the implementation of the work necessary to be compliant with the Data Protection Act 2018? Because obviously having an information asset register is a key part of an organisation being ready for that act coming into force. Secondly, and in relation to the piece of software that other colleagues have just been talking about, at the moment, if a customer wishes to exercise their right under the Data Protection Act 2018, how can they have a particular piece of data removed? And lastly, do we know if the new DPO, the Data Protection Officer, is happy with some of the delays that are talked about to the ASB service in that top item there in relation to their outstanding return? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Wright. I can answer some of your questions, while I may have to take away and get your response. The Information Asset Register is now completed, including from the ASB service, so that's done. It's on CityNet, so it's on SharePoint, and it is now a live document, so we're able to kind of continually review it. So that's ready and completed, so I think that answers that question. On your point about removal of records, we are working with our software providers. There's a rolling programme of delivering those responses to those systems. And as part of the digital strategy, we've got a roadmap in place as identifying where we need to do those. So there is a plan in place to get that up to date. In terms of the specific question about an individual asking for information to be removed, I'll have to come back to you on that one.
Thank you for the answers. Just to remind everyone to speak clearly into the mic so it can be picked up by the recording. Does that answer your questions far enough at this stage, councillor Wright? Do you have any kind of further observations on the discrepancy between the policy and the act coming in? Or are you happy with that?
Well, the only thing I... Thank you, Chair. We just, I guess, make... We talk a lot in this document about various GDPR legislation. It might be useful for those people, really, if we do make some reference to the fact this is... The act is called the Data Protection Act 2018 rather than simply being GDPR legislation. That's a nerdy point, but one that might be necessary just to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Do any other members... Councillor Haynes?
Yeah, just to go back a couple of pages, well, two questions on page twenty-one. One of them might be a stupid question because I'm quite new to the committee, but where is quarter one? Because it references quarter two and quarter three and quarter four, but not quarter one. The other one is, I can see that quarter three has significantly more days needed than quarter two at seventy-five and quarter four at eighty. It's a hundred and fifty, and that's obviously quite a jump. And I mean, I just wanted to check that we were... We had a really robust plan in place for staffing that, making sure we hit the deadlines, given that it's so much more days required than the other two quarters.
Thank you. No, that's not a silly question at all and a great observation. Quarter one is missing from there, and that is down to the fact that the plan didn't get going until quarter two. So as I joined this position, we pulled the approved plan, put it into quarters, assigned the work to each of the individual auditors, so they've got their plan of work for the year ahead. Q two is, you know, kind of a bit slower start. Q three, you know, as you pointed out, quite a lot of work to deliver, and then smaller in Q four in case we do experience any delays that we have time to catch up. So it's just about the profile, and of course you can do it any which way, but I find that this is the best way to achieve the plan at the end of the year.
Thank you, Fay. And I suppose, I think it would only be fair to confirm with CLT that they're happy that the audit plan is on course and happy that we delivered with the new revised timetable.
So we were aware with the transition that we would have a light to quarter one. I'd be honest, I don't think we'd probably have hoped to be completely out of quarter one without any days being presented there, but we are where we are. The reality of the resources we have available, though, we do have access to an external provider, and I'm expecting that if we have any challenges going forward, we will be utilising that opportunity and bringing that in. That is the model that we've gone forward with and the model that obviously Fay is working with. Sorry, if I turn around and look at Fay, I lose the mic. But yeah, we do have those options, so we will obviously, when we get to the end of quarter two, review that position and make sure that we can deliver the plan. But as you've heard from Fay, she's confident at the moment that we'll be able to turn the lack of review in quarter one around.
Thank you. Councillor Haynes?
Sorry, I'll shut up eventually. I've got one last set of questions. I sort of split them out because they're on two different bits, if that's okay. It's about the contract management of housing repairs and responsive maintenance on page twenty-five. I mean, firstly, again, this may be me being stupid, but I did not understand the question in the answer, the sentence in question one, so I don't know if that can be reworded perhaps at some point, maybe just to make it make a little bit more sense for people reading it. I'm not too clear about the timescales because it says you've got internal audit verification of evidence required. What's the time scale for that? And also, the second point about reviewing any remaining key performance indicator definitions, it says it's ongoing. At what point is that no longer high risk? Because this is the high-risk ones, aren't they? If it's an ongoing project, at what point is that going to not be high risk? At what point are you defining that as sort of a lower risk sort of...
Thank you. No, it's fine, it's absolutely fine. In response to your first point there, absolutely, I'll have a look at the wording there to ensure that when we pull this report together, you know, it makes sense. Apologies, I must have missed that. In terms of the verification, we've been informed that this particular recommendation may be ready for completion, and we need to gather the evidence before we can absolutely sign that off as complete. So I think also in response to your third question about it being ongoing, I think we need to look at the evidence that's presented to us, make a decision and bring that back to the committee about whether this can now actually be closed down, but we're not there at this point, which is why it's before you today. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other comments from members on the Q one report? No? Okay, well, just a few closing bits then. So, three point three on page eighteen says, "We expect all quarter two allocated work to be in draft report stage by the end of September 2021." We are at the end of September 2021. Are we at that draft stage?
Almost at the end. We've still got a little way to go. You know, I catch up with the team very regularly on a weekly basis, and we go through what we've got in terms of allocation. As I said, I don't have any concerns at the moment, but certainly we want to have everything in draft by the end of Q two, and the team assure me that we're almost there, almost got reports ready to review, so.
Thank you for that. Yeah, so, five point three, I mean, me and Fay did touch upon this earlier, but it is progress against medium priority recommendations we'll report to the committee in the future. If you could just share with the committee where we're at, as I think, please.
Of course. So from Appendix Two, you kind of see the layout that you can expect to receive. And having only just got hold of the audit database, as we call it, with all the recommendations on, we need to make sure that that data is clean and ready to go out to the service areas. I was also conscious that I didn't just want to ping out one spreadsheet and ask everybody to update it, so myself and Erica and my team spent some time breaking it down into each service area, and we'll work with each of those to get a really robust, you know, feedback and progress update for you for the committee going forward. But yeah, so a work in progress, but we really hope to be able to bring that back to you so you can see those also moving through to completion in the future.
Thank you, Fay. So just sort of a final few things from me. Obviously, what we've got in what we call Appendix One here, which is the breakdown of quarters, we've got IT audits and consultancy, they're, you know, effectively sort of separated out. And so I know that joint venture insourcing in a consultancy role, none of that's taken place. Obviously, we're going through that process at a rapid rate. When do you envisage that work to begin?
So those days are in the plan there to allow us to provide support as and when needed from management, so it's almost like a contingency in there. So when we are called upon to provide some advice or kind of sit in programme meetings, then we can, of course, be involved. We may not see that whole forty-five days be delivered, but certainly as and when we start to use that, we'll feedback to the committee what we've been up to and how we've supported that process. But for the time being, there are no days in there just yet.
Thank you. And I do remember that, you know, and do forgive me if I make a mistake, we were looking at reviewing sort of policies and procedures in this cycle, but I can't see that sort of reference there.
I haven't seen that in the plan, so if it's okay with you, Chair, I'll take that away and...
Yeah, okay. That was points that we discussed to have in the plan this year, and I think the committee were fully in agreement with that, so it's interesting that it's not there. Okay, so any other points from members or we can note report? Okay, other reports duly noted. Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, item six is the risk management update.
So just a reminder, this report provides, or forms part of, two yearly updates to what it committed that we provide on risk management. The report provides with the quarter one position, and that was updated by all the risk owners over the summer and reviewed by CLT as part of their quarterly assurance process. It also went to Cabinet earlier this month as well. You'll see there has been no increase in any of the corporate risk scores, but we have included a new risk around waste and recycling that's been fully worked up for quarter one, and the full register is included as part of the paper.
Thank you for the introduction, Hannah. So I throw the report open to members for discussion before we note. And councillor Wright?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to pick up on risk five, which is further waves of COVID-19. We had this situation today where the Prime Minister seemed to find the need to comment on whether or not we'd be cancelling Christmas, so I guess that gets one thinking as to where we possibly are. I just, really, I mean, it must be incredibly challenging to keep on top of a risk register around COVID-19. So my question is, how often is this particular risk looked at and updated? Thank you.
So as a CLT, we're working on embedding risks around the organisation. Fundamentally, when we do our reviews on a quarterly basis, that's when we formally update the risks. But each directorate, as part of their monthly reviews around their performance and their financial positions, will be given consideration to anything outside of our normal activities. What you're all aware of, though, is COVID is trying to move into that phase of actually this is business as usual now, and we will be dealing with that as part of those activities. But fundamentally, we formally update the risk register on a quarterly basis, but each directorate has the opportunity to update their directorate risks, and then we review on a quarterly basis whether those directorate risks escalate up into the corporate risk register. There's absolutely no timeline on changing the risk register, and as something evolves, the risk registers should be updated appropriately.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Wright. Councillor Giles followed by councillor Haynes.
Thank you, Chair. In relation to risk fourteen, ASB on page forty-eight, the current risk is obviously significantly higher than the target risk. I was going to ask, what lessons can be learned from the restructure of the ASB team as further transformational change is taken forward in the council? Thanks.
I do wish my colleague Louise hadn't landed me at this point. If you'd like to know more about that, I think we'll ask Lou to come back and talk about ASB in particular detail. But as a CLT, we are constantly learning from what we've done previously, and we are putting those through. One thing Hannah and I have been talking about in relation to the risk register is ensuring that the mitigations that we've put in place and approved as part of our responses to move to our target risk, we actually see that flow through in the scores as they come back on a regular basis. And that's all part of us working with the directors and ensuring they understand the impacts of the actions that they've agreed, and therefore we see the risks move, and that's something we know is part of our development pathway. But I can assure you, as we're doing all the reviews of the restructures, we're doing lessons learned and feeding them into the next steps. But I'm sorry, I can't sit here and talk about ASB particularly, but I'm happy to ask my colleagues to come back and talk to you about that if you'd like us to.
Thank you, Annabelle. I'm sure that councillor Giles would welcome that, councillor.
I appreciate she's probably busy, but something perhaps in writing to the committee afterwards on lessons learned would be, I think, would be of value in the press.
That's great. Thank you. Councillor Haynes followed by councillor Sanders.
Yeah, just on the ASB, I think that sounds really valuable. I think it'd be really good if we can learn from lessons learnt across areas where applicable. I know, like, I know it took one of my colleagues about two years pushing for the ASB webpage thing to be changed, so I'm really pleased that's happened. I've got some questions on risk three, the commercialisation. I remember lots of this commercial property acquisition stuff starting to happen when I was last on the city council, and I think at the time I remember thinking it seemed quite risky if stuff changed. So I just want, like, I know that there's a new asset management strategy being produced, maybe some of these questions are going to be answered in that, but I'm worried we might become potentially quite reliant on some of these things that we now can't replace. I'm not sure when the law was changed, I thought it was just those clarifications on the actual law. And also, like, the carbon credentials of some of this stuff, like buying cold stores, that might not, might be quite risky in the future. Like I said, we just haven't necessarily got the ability to replace this income if we're not keeping the commercial property acquisitions going. So yeah, I said that some of that might be answered in the asset management strategy, but I thought it was worth asking anyway.
So the asset management strategy will very much look at how we manage our asset portfolio that's existing. We cannot borrow to provide a yield anymore. That's the change in PWLB, which is why we are no longer looking at pure commercial investment opportunities. What we all do, though, as a team, is look at opportunities to do things in a different way, and commercial activity is still allowed, it's just that we can't borrow for it. So that's why we've got the change in relation to the property investment strategy. But everything that Mark is doing from an asset management development perspective is looking at which of our assets are providing a return. Are we able to improve on that position? There is nothing stopping us with the PWLB changes to actually invest in our existing assets because we are able to ensure that those assets are kept and maintained to a particular standard. So what Mark will be doing in the review is looking at every single asset we've got, which category we put it into in relation to, is it just providing a community service or is it something that we can actually continue to improve the return on it and therefore looking at where we'd want to invest? That's just part of the asset management strategy, and that will come through when you see the development of that paper. But yeah, unfortunately, we just cannot invest for yield anymore, so we have to change that approach.
Sorry, I think you missed the bit about the carbon credentials of different places and whether that's something we're assessing, given, you know, the climate change is ongoing problem. Things might start to change. Stuff that seems a good investment now may not in the future, just simply based on, yeah, carbon emissions and that sort of thing.
I'm afraid I'm not the expert in our carbon investment strategy. We'd need to bring our colleagues back in relation to that. But fundamentally, what we're talking about here in this risk is our ability to have the right skills to be able to deliver against that original strategy. That strategy has changed, and fundamentally, therefore, the risk score is where it is. We're probably in a position where this will come off because we have closed down that property investment strategy in future, but in relation to investment, in relation to addressing our carbon needs and our action plan, that obviously comes through, and we'd need to talk to the experts about that. I can't sit here, I'm afraid, and respond to that today, Chair.
No, thank you for the point. I mean, I'd like to come in on this at that point as well. I mean, for me, it was always very clear that PWLB was never lending money for yield. I think that where it says here, where it says that following changes to the PWLB board lending terms, I don't believe they were changes. I think there was clarity of a position that already was, but people may have a difference of opinion. I don't think it also precludes you from investing in area, and so if the policy now is to just not invest because if you can't invest out of area, I don't see that that's necessarily a benefit to the council. What I would say on that as well is that the, obviously, asset management strategy, which is separate from the commercial strategy, was a target date of August twenty-one, and now we're obviously a month away from that. So obviously, that's slipped. Do we have any idea what the timeframe on that would be? And I guess sort of the rationale would be not utilising full benefit of your assets will actually have a monetary cost each day, so while you don't utilise your assets as well as you can, you will effectively be not generating as much money or not making the assets work as well. So it's costing money, the delay in that strategy. So do we know when the strategy may be delivered?
I literally have had today a meeting in relation to the delivery of the asset management strategy. I can't sit here and confirm what the timeline is, but I can just give you assurance that we are looking at different resources that we can bring in to address that issue because we are aware that the timetable has slightly slipped. But obviously, for myself, for section one five-one needing to set the balance budget in February, I'm very keen that we put the right resources behind it, and literally, I can give you the assurance that we are looking at that. We will need to be looking external to bring that additional support in because the team is very light internally at the moment, but we know that we need to do that. This is exactly why we set up the Business Change Reserve, so that we can actually do that and bring in the resources external as we need them to do specific projects. Can I just clarify, though, in relation to PWLB? We can purchase property in the city if it is in relation to regeneration. That may have the side impact of providing yield, depending on what the regeneration is for, so there are opportunities still to borrow to do regeneration in the city, of which we will give due consideration to if the right projects come along. So we are able to do that, Chair.
Thank you for that. Councillor Sanders followed by councillor Wright.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just returning to the ABS, across my ward last year, we had frequent need to refer to the bake team and also our local policing team. I know the, what is now the anti-social behaviour group or team has had a significant increase in staffing, but I don't think it's clear as to how they operate or what their terms of reference are. So would it be worth having a future meeting and perhaps for all councillors, something about how the ABS team works and what they do?
I'm going to take that away because we need to be very careful that we're considering the topic you've suggested at the right committee. We need to be clear on what reason the audit committee would want to review the ASB team because for me at the moment, it would feel like it would more sit within our scrutiny limit of terms of reference. But I'll take away that question in relation to visibility of how the team are working and where's the best place to review that, if that's okay, Chair.
I think that would be a wise course. I see what councillor Sanders has to say.
Yeah, that would be fine. As I said, it's something I think all councils would be interested in, not something just for order.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And obviously, we're looking at... And obviously, we're looking at moving a risk profile here and we do have the Chair of Scrutiny. I'm sure he'll be interested to look at that, perhaps through that mechanism. Thank you. So councillor Wright?
Thank you, Chair. Back to GDPR compliance again, which is risk nine in the pack. It's a question about data breaches and what the reporting of data breaches look like. I'm aware that other public organisations may well bring reports about data breaches to those members of the organisation that have a sort of governance role. And I wonder, perhaps Chair, if you would agree with me that maybe having a report on data breaches coming to this committee once a quarter might actually be quite useful for us, given the significant nature of fines for mishandling of data? That I think is a very, there's a very real interest there for the audit committee. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll pick up on that, I guess, before officers come in. I think that's a really good point there, councillor Wright, and I would support that as well. And I'll look for members to see if they disagree with that information coming back. I'm not seeing that. So I think the committee as a whole would like to have those data breach reports coming through so we are aware of how many. What do we feel?
No, I'm happy to do that if you'd just allow me to talk to Lou about the best time to bring back to you. We'll get that on the web plan.
Yep, that's great. Thank you very much. No problem at all. Councillor Stewie?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just risk six on page thirty nine, the impact of Brexit. We've seen nationally issues arising at the moment as a result of Brexit combined with the pandemic. And the risk, therefore, suggests to me that it could be higher than the fifteen that we've allocated. So I'd just like to ask about the allocation of the risk score for Brexit. And just a small point in the first column, it talks about risk associated with potential no deal scenario. Is that outdated? A bit of information that probably needs to come out.
I'll just jump in as well, just for a second. Thank you for highlighting that particular area on the risk register here because, you know, it was one of concern to myself. And so the questions about, is it outdated, et cetera? I think that no deal scenario definitely might, so I just want to pick up on that with you as well. I mean, the second and third point, food availability, increased prices of food and fuel, possible disruption to fuel supplies. I think we can all simply say that's occurring right now. Councillor Stewie, please come back.
Well, yes, clearly this is having an inflationary effect. The impact is national and it's having a, it has and will have a continuing local impact on the city. So I was wondering if there is scope to look at the risk score for Brexit? Because I've seen this was put together some time ago, judging by the note in there, and therefore not quite updated.
Yeah, and to pick up on that, it was something that we highlighted as a committee ahead of finally leaving the EU. And what I've noted as well is that the levels of mitigation, there doesn't seem to be a lot of local resilience built into the mitigations in terms of tackling it citywide perhaps or even regional wide. But I agree with you that, you know, maybe this needs a timely review now. I'll hand over to officers.
It does appear that the worst case scenario is playing out in front of us.
Yeah, I'm happy to take it away and ask for a review. I think the description is as the risk was originally drafted, and I do appreciate that some of those have moved on. So it's about how we update the main risk within that because I very much know that the team have been focusing around the actions behind that. We also need to remember that things are happening very fast at the moment and some of the topics you've just raised are just very, very current, aren't they? And we don't know what the impact of that is. So I'm very happy, though, I think there is enough that's happening currently that we need to be aware of. But I can share back from, obviously, financial, we know from the contracts that we're letting as well, we are being hit now with the risks that people are building in through the supply route in relation to cost. And fundamentally, things are costing us more than we'd expected. So they have come off risk and they've become an issue. And then we're managing those issues through actually the capital programme, where we're seeing the biggest impact of that. But we obviously report that back through as well, through our cabinet reports and do our financial management. But very happy to ask for this risk to be refreshed because I think there is some very relevant real-time issues that are coming through. I think, or I hope you're all very comfortable, though, with the work that the team did in relation to the Covid response. We had a really, really positive way of managing food shortages and making sure those that needed to get them. Obviously, that's not a national food shortage and being able to buy in the shops, although it was, wasn't it, if you're trying to find your toilet rolls at particular times? But, you know, we had a very good way of getting out to those communities who are in more need than others and making sure they had the appropriate food they needed. So I will ask the team to have a look at this and link it into the Covid response as well.
No, I very much appreciate that. And specifically, you know, as councillor Stewie said, is actually looking at the score matrix on that as well. And I suppose that in many ways, because, you know, this also impacts on another risk area where we're, you know, looking at kind of emergency planning. And in some ways, you know, we're seeing the impact of Brexit and in some ways, the emergency planning may need to, you know, consider the impacts of Brexit in this process. I mean, in terms of, you rightly said about the Covid mitigations that are there, and we may need to be prepared for emergency food drops, you know, we will have to see actually what happens at the end of this harvest time. So, you know, looking at that could have a knock-on effect on other areas, I think it's worth considering. What I'll do is I'll take councillor Giles, who is next indicated.
Thank you, Chair. With regards to rising fuel wholesale prices, what mitigation measures are we taking in partnership with Octopus Energy to protect raw power? Thanks.
I personally can't answer that question. I don't believe at the moment we're doing anything in particular to that point you've raised. But obviously, through the council's financial projections, we're looking and we have contingencies set aside if we get additional pressures. But in relation to the particular point you raised, I'm afraid I might have to answer that.
I appreciate that you can't have an answer to hand, but we've seen how the energy markets moved and there's a lot of threats of small and independent energy producers. So if we could get an understanding of the risk, because obviously, there's a lot of council tenants that, you know, citywide tenants that are locked in or, you know, invested in this scheme. And so their outgoing costs will be intrinsically linked to the success of that company. So if we could understand the risk or threat to that better as a committee in a written report between now and the next committee, I think that would alleviate your concerns, councillor Giles?
I'd say yes. Is that okay?
I will need to go away and find out what information we can get because I don't know what particular information is shared from individual companies. So we'll have a look at what we can do and see whether we can understand the impact on the city and our particular tenants.
Thank you. So next is councillor Haynes.
Yeah, on the theme of the emergency planning one, well, sort of two questions. One, which I know that lots of stuff, emergency planning came to scrutiny. We've got the Chair of Scrutiny here. So I don't know if you felt that this sort of sums up what the sort of scrutiny recommendations were about emergency planning as well and whether these two things fit well together. But also, I've noticed that there's lots of stuff in this about flooding, about various things that are linked intrinsically to climate change. And wondered if we could have a risk relating to climate change put into the risk register? Because as I said, some of it's covered under emergency planning, like the flooding, but some of it's not, stuff like the impact of extreme heat on our residents of Norwich, air quality, biodiversity, all of these stuff is, and I know there's two motions coming to council about climate change adaptation. So one from the Labour Group, one from the Green Group. So I think this fits in quite nicely, would be to put in something in the risk register because there are genuine risks that I think we could be mitigating against. I think it would also really help the council show that we're really serious about tackling climate, if we've got it in the risk register, it's all in one place, people can see what adaptations we're putting in place. Because what I'm concerned that we may not be able to deliver on our requirements for twenty fifty carbon neutrality, the government's going to be putting lots of stuff on us as a council in terms of what we need to be mitigating for. And I think, again, this would help us track that we're definitely going to hit any government targets that are put down on some local authorities.
Thank you, councillor Haynes. I think we'll give councillor Wright a second to see if he wants to respond to the points about scrutiny. Do you want to come back on that?
Well, only in so far, Chair, to say that the scrutiny hasn't actually looked at the emergency planning document.
Okay.
No, it was offered as an option for some of the things that we could look at as part of our work programme, but the committee chose other options.
Oh, sorry. I've got the wrong index stick then and possibly read too early on the agenda or something.
Yes, yeah. So there was a recommendation from when Cabinet considered it that scrutiny might look at it. The committee has chosen three other things to look at for this civic year. But I think there was some sense that we'd quite like to look at the emergency planning document, right, obviously we'd like to look at it, but there just wasn't time for the remainder of this civic year.
Thank you for the point of clarity, councillor Wright, and to make clear that, you know, scrutiny is the committee to look at that. We're here to make sure that the mitigation mechanisms are in place and not to actually scrutinise the actual decisions of Cabinet in that respect. So in that respect, it's a shame that that hasn't happened, but we understand the scrutiny committee works hard and is very busy working on behalf of the council. To pick up on councillor Haynes's point, I agree and I share that. We've got national committed targets to achieving carbon zero by twenty fifty and obviously a lot of us in this room realise that that is far too late and that needs to be done far, far quicker. There doesn't seem to be a roadmap here in the council. There is an environmental policy, but there's certainly not a roadmap to twenty fifty carbon neutrality. There's reputational risk, there's a legislative risk, a cost risk in not being able to deliver that. To stick things that are related to climate change under emergency planning is to not see the slow and incremental impacts of climate change, which will impact people in terms of finance as well as lifestyle and quality of life. And it's, you know, we've got COP twenty six coming up. So I share councillor Haynes's point that actually the risk register should hit here, the corporate risk register should have an element on climate change and to show what those, the mitigations the council are going to put in place, even to just get its own house in order to be carbon neutral. And that may be even of its commercial investments as well, which are never calculated. So I think, you know, I would agree with councillor Haynes that there should be an element and I would ask officers, has and when have that been considered? And would, could you justify a reason for not having the science-based understanding that climate change will have a massive detrimental impact on how this council functions its business moving forward?
So I'm just going to politely remind the committee that this is a non-political committee and we're reviewing the risk register here. I will take away and talk to my colleagues at CLT about whether we believe there is a corporate risk in relation to climate change and whether we want to incorporate that and why it's not on the risk register as presented to you today. I will take that away, but I will just remind you, we are a non-political committee and we are looking at the risk register. And you've identified that you would like to see a risk around climate change and we'll take that way and give you consideration to it.
Yeah, and I appreciate the words there of the officer because, of course, it is accepted science that climate change is happening, it's not a political movement, it's not a political idea, and it is accepted as a risk. Thank you. So any other points from the committee on the existing risk register? Councillor Stewie?
Thank you, Chair. I think just following up some of the other discussions we've had, there is an immediate risk perhaps to the council and certainly to the city as the FLO scheme comes to an end and the likely knock-on effect of that and the universal credit cut. And noting that you say it's not a political committee, these are facts that are happening and will have an impact on the city.
And is your question that this should be incorporated somewhere or considered?
Yes, apologies. I couldn't find any note of the universal credit cut or the end of FLO. And both are relevant across, at least one of the risk areas.
Thank you for the feedback. We'll have a look and see which risk it may be appropriate to incorporate into.
Thank you for that. Any observations from members? No, I'm not seeing that. I think we've given a good due consideration of how the risks are laid out currently, how the council is going on mitigating those, where we feel there might be gaps as well. I think that's all good work to assist management in owning and implementing the documents. I'm just going to go through, I just would note that on the risk for mitigation, mental health working group in place to support staff wellbeing and resilience, I think that's something that is good and should be welcomed. Obviously, everyone's had a very difficult year or two now. We're developing to new hybrid working, working situations can be difficult for some at home, isolation can be difficult. And so supporting staff and members and having that highlighted there, I think is positive. We've obviously seen that the current residual risk score of further Covid is at twenty, which is obviously above thresholds that CLT set. But obviously, these can be accepted and that can also be based upon the length of time that the risk can run for as well as other mitigation factors. And so we hope that this pandemic will come to an end sooner rather than later. So it's justifiable to have that score and to be held at that score. Yeah, I think that's pretty much covered. I think the committee's covered all the points, you know, that I was covering as well. Obviously, you know, it's interesting to note, risk ten, the joint venture contracts are there. And we can see that, you know, mitigation's there in terms of revised key performance indicators for property building, maintenance contracts have been agreed, as we've discussed before, and regular review of performance. Obviously, the impact is not so high, but the likelihood is. So it's one I'm sure that CLT will be keeping a close eye on. And as councillor Giles had previously commented, the risk fourteen, antisocial behaviour, you know, I think it's important that the council does focus on that and has obviously been taking a lot of steps recently. So it'd be good to see those in bed as board councillors of all parties. We know how much this is impacting our residents and so it would be good to see that score come down. And so we welcome work towards that. And obviously, the governance around contract management, again, you know, there is a range of mitigation involved and it's good to see that some of the work that the committee has done and focused on and with internal audit and then that's fed back and worked in a positive way to draw out mitigation and to help make that area function better and make the council generally function better. So I welcome all of that. And then we've got risk sixteen, the council's approach to waste and recycling becomes financially, environmentally or contractually unsustainable. Obviously, that's a new risk. We've got, as We've got as one of the action points on that, this is page 50, it's got waste strategy to be reviewed to address financial, regulatory and climate challenges. And the target date for that is February 22. I think that it also says, yeah, staff development programme focusing on procurement waste strategy and contract management to be designed and delivered. I think it's really important that we involve and work with councillors early in that process to help start scoping it. So I would like to recommend that good councillor engagement helps shape that work going forward. So if there are no other comments from anyone else on that, we do know that with the points that we've raised and questions that we have asked to come back and we'll move on to the next item of business. And we are on item seven, and it's the risk management policy and strategy.
Thank you. So obviously, as standard, we review our policies and procedures. This forms part of that review of our risk management policy and strategy. First thing to note, we have merged those two documents into a single document, just to make it a little bit more accessible for officers and provide all the information in one place. The policy covers the definition of risk, the risk appetite and scoring approach that the council has. And sets out quite clearly the roles and responsibilities in relation to risk management, provides guidance to all employees of the council. One change, just to highlight to you, which is detailed in paragraph nine, is a slight change we've made to the policy around scoring risks. The previous strategy had a two-stage approach, which was inherent risk and then scoring on the residual level. So the inherent one effectively was saying, what is this risk as if we had no controls in place? How would we score the level of risk? And then the residual level being after assessing all the controls that are actually in place. We've changed that slightly, so it still has that current residual level of risk. So how do we assess where we are, given the current controls in place? But then it incorporates a target risk level, which identifies, you know, how we think that target, the risk will move after the implementation of actions that have been identified. And hopefully, that approach makes it a little bit easier to sort of see how the actions that we're proposing, we expect to impact on that risk scoring. And be able to track that direction of travel over a period of time. The policy itself has been reviewed by the corporate leadership team and their feedback incorporated. Obviously, we're asking committee their comments and review of the policy ahead of it going to Cabinet for approval, hopefully in October.
Thank you for introducing Hannah and our three open to members. I'll kick off a little bit then, while members gather their thoughts. What I would say is that first of all, it's really welcome to see a review of the policy. I think it looks to me like a lot of work's gone into it and there's a lot there that is helping to shift the culture of the council for the better. Where we are making it clear that identifying problems is not necessarily a negative because we can mitigate and fix those issues before they become serious. That we have opportunities for the fact that areas of responsibility will be placed at individual level rather than at team levels. I think that that makes a big difference because then you have owned risks there. And again, it means that something won't fall between the cracks. I do, you know, point 10, all employees should systematically and promptly report to their manager any perceived new risks or failures of existing control measures for consideration. I think that's a good point, a valid point, and again culturally should be encouraged. But I can imagine, I can remember working in workplaces in a previous life. And that, if there is not a mechanism to be able to also report that almost as a whistleblower, as in an anonymous way. If you have to go through your line manager for such things, if there's a conflict at that point, then that issue may not get picked up. So I do, I do think there needs to be mechanisms for anonymous reporting. The policy doesn't pick up on that. I would say that on point 11, it says on the third bullet point, but greater risk awareness and an improved and cost-effective control environment, which should mean fewer incidences and other control failures and better service outcomes by allowing senior management to focus and prioritise mitigation of the most significant risks and opportunities. And again, for me, that is something that you can see is kind of half-empty and half-full. And so the half-full is that that's pragmatic, it's practical. You know, you can focus on the big issues, tackle them quickly. But again, that half-empty view of it would be that's only if everybody is aware of all of the issues and the facts, trained, empowered and confident to kind of deliver that. So placing that additional responsibility comes with its risks. So I wonder whether the checks and balances are there to make sure they are focusing on the right points. So anyway, that's enough for me for now. But I mean, if you can actually directly answer that point about, you know, about those risks that are kind of identified. So did that make sense?
So in terms of having, you know, making sure that employees feel empowered to be able to raise risks. I think that really does form part of the piece of work we've been doing over the last year, 18 months with all of the leadership team to really embrace risk management as a tool to do that. And I think that message is beginning to get down and risk is a topic of conversation that sits on directorate management team meetings. And so I'd like to think we've certainly moved that culture in terms of people understanding that it's important to raise risks. It's not something to be kind of buried and have that conversation. In terms of, second, I've lost my train now.
So it's more about, you know, allowing to prioritise, you know, the bigger risks, you know, the most significant risks and the risks of kind of a judgement around those really.
Yeah, and I think that's back to that conversation, having that constant risk conversation at the senior leadership team, but also at directorate team meetings and management team meetings below that. And that it being a live conversation. So, you know, actually as things change, we're seeing that change regularly on the risk register. And that's the conversation we've had recently. When we took the policy to CLT, actually, it has to be a dynamic and live document. And as part obviously of getting this re-approved, hopefully through Cabinet, we'll then be able to relaunch this. And I think it's a really good opportunity in a good time. We've done the work at the senior level. Now we can relaunch this policy with the rest of the employees and make sure we're embedding it at all levels of the organisation.
Thank you for that. And I think that's significant, as you say, about embedding it at all levels. And I appreciate the answers you've given me, but I kind of want to ask it again. And so what I want to say is, if I am an entry-level member of the council and, you know, I've got a line manager in front of me and I don't feel confident in something that I want to raise, I don't feel that that's actually going to be addressed. How does that person feel confident about raising it? How can they raise it elsewhere or go round their manager, as it were? Because cultural change takes a while and equally, you know, how do we keep that person motivated in reporting further if they haven't built that trust network with their manager?
So I think every directorate will do things slightly differently. But I can only talk on behalf of the approach I've got in my directorate. But fundamentally, we have coffee and catch-ups and we have open discussions with members of the team at all levels. We all bring different skills and experience and nobody should be fearful of raising something that they would like to be looked at, an opportunity that they see maybe hasn't been taken. And we have those open discussions. And I think that is a cultural piece. I think I'd be very concerned though if an individual didn't feel able to go and talk to another colleague. We're doing a lot of peer work, making sure that people are meeting colleagues across the organisation. The induction programme is going amazingly well at the moment. Every time somebody joins the council, they get introduced to colleagues right across the organisation. And they're immediately starting that networking and opportunities to have different discussions. So I hope, I don't know that there's any example that would raise that concern with you because it's certainly not been raised with myself, that people don't feel able to raise any issues of concern. And yeah, if there are any particular issues we need to look into, then we can do that. But I've not personally had it raised as a particular cultural issue, that if someone believes there's a risk that there isn't somewhere, they can go and talk about it.
No, I appreciate the answer and I'm not insinuating that there is a problem or that something is being reported to me in that way. But what is reassuring is that the other elements that you're talking about there about the integration and that changing of the culture, because all businesses, all councils need to adapt its culture. And I think that the steps that you're putting in there will foster a better culture. So I welcome those. Any comments from members on the policy? No, well, no, I appreciate it. I mean, I think it's interesting that we should just note page 67, okay, which is roles and responsibilities. Obviously, it details the audit committee there. Monitoring adherence to the risk management policy. That point, I guess we received the assurance by the work that internal audit will do around that. And so, you know, I'm getting nods from internal audit. So that's a way that we fulfil that element of our function. And reviewing risk management policy, clearly we're doing that today as well. Reviewing reports on the council's risk management processes in order to provide independent assurance of the adequacy of the risk management framework and the associated control environment. But again, I think we're doing that today. And raising any concerns on risk management with Cabinet. So we've raised a number of risk management concerns in terms of the actual corporate risk register. We've got potential questions and answers and suggestions we've put forward. We'll see what we receive back and we'll see if any of those are incorporated. Or we feel that we need to ask Cabinet to look at certain areas as well. As councillor Haynes has indicated, so if I just bring in councillor Haynes?
Yeah, now on page 69, about risk awareness, support and training for managers, staff and members. I wondered what the approach we were taking to training for members on that. So I'm not sure it's necessarily appropriate for, you know, that to be thrown open to all members because it's quite in-depth, isn't it? So I wondered if there was specific sort of individual members to get specific training on that, maybe external providers, maybe rather than running it through the council. Just because I think if we've tried to do all members' training on risk assessment, it may get too deep too quickly. And whether there's options for sort of wider training for all members, but deeper stuff for individuals on that one, I don't know.
So Leah is part of joining the team as our new monitoring officer, is reviewing the member training programme. And we're looking at the whole work plan throughout an annual cycle. And that is one of the areas that is being picked up and being looked at. I'll feed back to Leah, the question of whether we want to offer a more in-depth training session and a more generic one for the wider sort of councillor forum. But yeah, I'll feed that back on your behalf.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And just to pick up on that, I mean, obviously, if there is member training being assessed, I think it's a good start by talking to the members about it would be the start point. So maybe I missed that email in the thousands in my inbox.
No, but what we are doing is reaching out to the political assistants to talk to you about how you'd like us to do that assessment. Because we are talking about whether we do a training needs assessment, which would be quite personal to individual councillors. So we're trying to reach out and find out which is your preferred method for how we actually capture, whether we've got any skills gap and how we feel that. And obviously, we'll be working with other members that don't have a political assistant more directly.
Yeah, I think that's a good way forward. And just to pick up on councillor Haynes's point there in terms of training, you know, both me and councillor Driver have had the pleasure of going along and visiting and getting some in-depth training. And I think that there are merits to both. To run all member training can be good to give some skills base. But again, attendance can be debatable. And in fact, that could actually arguably end up costing more if you have a very small turnout. I think always if somebody is taking a particular interest in any area the council covers as a councillor and they are committed to attending a day course or an online day course, it shows a real commitment to actually really wanting to learn something. And I think that can really be a benefit to the council. So I think both models are valid moving forward as well. Thank you. Any other points on policy and the strategy, councillor Stu?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Not so much a question, just a comment. I'd like to thank offices for the report, which I think is really clear. And helps us as members to understand the assessments and the scoring matrix. So thank you for that.
Excellent. And if there are no more comments on the actual policy, I think we can recommend that to Cabinet. Is that agreed? Okay, that is agreed. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on in the agenda to the item eight, which is whistleblowing. Thank you.
Thank you. So second policy of the night, this is the whistleblowing policy. And it's just a reminder, this is the policy that, you know, provides a process so that anyone that has a concern about the council has the confidence to be able to raise that concern. And there's a clear process that they can follow to do so. The policy was reviewed relatively recently. But what we've done here is updated the changes in personnel. So obviously, we've had Fay join us from the internal audit perspective. And as Annabelle mentioned, we've had Leah join us as the new monitoring officer. So we've reflected those new appointments in the policy document. And other than that, we've had internal audit who've had a look at our policy, just as a sort of a light touch review, just to make sure it's in line with best practice. And they've come back and confirmed that it is. So no other changes to the policy other than those contact details.
Thank you, Hannah. Any comments? No, I mean, as Hannah clearly identified, that we've got a few technical changes in names. I think from our responsibility as a committee, we need to have assurance that the policy is robust and fit for purpose. We can receive that assurance by the fact that internal audit have looked at it and confirmed that it follows best practice. So I think we can have that assurance that the policy is fit for purpose. What I would also add is that I think it's a very important policy. I think it allows, you know, gives people support and reassurance. And I think when we did do this before, we also did have a drive through the organisation to highlight the policy. And I think if we've taken this opportunity to refresh, I do know that we do place signs in predominant parts of the building as per the policy. But I think it would be good to have a reminder that it is there for staff for that peace of mind.
Yes, we've already started talking to our comms team about how we can relaunch a campaign around it. Fundamentally, I did look back at the campaign that was done a few years ago and actually it's still quite relevant. So I know how busy everybody is. We will be able to repurpose some of that quite quickly and get the communications out there. But yes, you're absolutely right. That'll be some of our next steps.
Thank you. Any other points on the whistleblowing? And just to check that there is to update the committee on the review of the whistleblowing policy and highlight minor amendments. Just to check, do we need to just note that? Yes, just to note. Yep, fine. So we'll bring that item to a close and that brings the end to the public part of the meeting.